Tuesday, July 6th at 6:35 and we are convened for the Groton Resource Recovery Authority Special Meeting. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Heed. So we have eight councilors for the Resource Recovery Authority meeting. We have quorum. Approval of minutes, 2021-501, June 23rd, special meeting minutes. This is June 23rd, 2020, special meeting minutes. This was found on page two of your packet. Would someone like to move acceptance of the minutes?
I'd like to move through the Groton Resource Recovery Authority Special Meeting Minutes on June 23rd.
This was by Bumgardner.
Second.
Seconded by Parker, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes of June 23rd, 2020? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm against it. Yes, aye.
Okay, so seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Obray. So we had no one sign up for public comment. Is there anyone that wanted to comment on the GRRA business for this evening? No? Okay, great. Any communications councilors for the GRRA item? Okay, very good. So we will move to new business. This is Roman numeral five, 2021-486, transfer station fee structure. This was found on page five and six in your packet. And Mr. Hanover is with us this evening. And let's see, we should probably have this on the floor and then we can take discussions. So Councilor Bumgardner, would you like to move the resolution?
No.
I'm sorry?
Do you wish to first motion? You will read the second one.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Resolution approved in the proposed changes to the town of Groton transfer station fee structure, whereas the Groton Resource Recovery Authority, GRRA, authorizes the proposed new rate schedule for the transfer station. Annual permit, existing fees, am I reading the chart?
I think probably for the record.
Okay. Annual permit, existing fees is $140, the new fee will be $100. Annual permit, 65 and older, not applicable, new fee is $75. Daily pass, $25, going to $20. Trip ticket is $60, it's now going to $50. Appliances, 20, they will now be 15. Tires are three, or three, and now are going to five. Whereas the GRRA authorizes the creation of a senior discount, 65 years and up, as indicated in the new rate schedule. Whereas the GRRA authorizes the one-time cost to purchase a daily price of $20, be credited toward the purchase of an annual permit if purchased within 30 days. Whereas GRRA authorizes the cost of an annual permit be reduced by 50% when purchased after March 1st. Whereas the GRRA authorizes the public use of the facility on Wednesday in addition to the Thursday through Saturday scheduled currently in place. Resolve, the Groton Resource Recovery Authority authorizes all changes proposed by the Public Works Department herein and as described by Public Works referral. 2021-486, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Zepiri. Mr. Hanover, did you wish to introduce anything before we open it up?
Sure, I could just talk for a few minutes. It's always good to see everybody. For those that don't remember me, I'm very happy to be here at Public Works. You know, as we talked about this during our budget deliberations, we took a real hard look at the transfer station fees, which were double, almost doubled in FYE 19. We had a lot of concerns from residents. We had some concerns about the way we process some of our payments. So we took a look at what we could do to kind of make the fees a little bit more reasonable, looked at other towns with their charging, and also came up with some recommendations to really improve our customer service. We also, back in FYE 19, we were open Wednesday through Saturday, and then we cut it back to Thursday through Saturday at that time too, as well as increase our fees substantially. So as was mentioned, the annual permit will be reduced from $140 to $100 per year. We're also introducing for the first time a senior discount if you will for those 65 and over. Right now, they're paying the $140. Under this new fee structure, they'll be paying $75. The day passes, which give you unlimited use of the transfer station for one day, will be reduced from $25 to $20.
Hi, Sean.
The trip tickets, which are for large vehicles, will be reduced from $60 to $50. Appliances would be reduced from $20 to $15 apiece, and then tires would be increased from $3 to $5.
Right now, the tires?
Some comments, and we discussed a couple of these during the budget deliberations, was currently to purchase an annual pass, people have to go to the Town Hall Annex, which is only open Monday through Friday. So if somebody wants to purchase one on a Saturday, they're pretty much out of luck. So we're proposing that if they purchase a day pass for $20 on a Saturday, they can come up to the Annex within 30 days and then get credit for that $20 towards their annual permit. One of the biggest concerns we hear in our office is the fact that we don't prorate the cost of the annual permit now. So if somebody moved into town today and went up tomorrow to the Annex, they'd have to pay $140 basically for two months because the permits run from September 1st to August 30th. So we're proposing that at the six-month point, which is March 1st, the fees would be basically cut in half. So anybody that moved into town or just wanted to do some spring cleaning would only be charged $50, or in the case of senior, $37.50. We're also proposing the hours of operation that immediately starting from actually, go back to Wednesday through Saturdays, or adding an extra day back in. You know, you had to sign up at the transfer station, announce this additional day, and you've had a lot of positive feedback from people coming through.
Excuse me, Mr. Hanover?
Yes.
Could you pull your mic a little closer, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Is that better?
And just for the council when you're speaking as well, thank you.
Okay. And I think that's about all I have.
I'm sorry I interrupted you.
That's all right. Wait till the end.
You just told me. Okay, thank you so much. So there's a lot of information, that's good information. Councilor Bordelon?
Thank you. Thank you for this. I think this is a step in the right direction as far as reconfiguring some of the fees. Some of the things that I do not see on here that I would like to maybe consider is also a discount for military personnel in our community. I think it's very important to make sure we represent that body here. Having a slight military discount would enhance the quality of life for those folks serving our country, as well as the fact they move the most and they utilize those services. And having a break on that could be very beneficial and allow for proper disposal of hazardous materials and things like that. The other thing that I had asked was the use of cards at the facility. The average person does not carry cash anymore, and so I'm excited to see that the Saturday thing will be enhanced. But it is important that we move into the 21st century and make sure that we're using the most accessible ways. They have the app, card apps, they have everything. I don't know how many times I've been down there and didn't have enough cash and had to turn back around. So it makes it very inconvenient for the average person. So is there any movement towards or consideration for thinking about a military discount or use of cards at the facility?
No, it's a good point, Dr. Millet, you discount. I actually hadn't thought about that. It's certainly whatever the spot he wants to do. As far as the credit card, there's haven't, you know, consultation with our finance director to try to get that up there because it's something we would like to see happen up there because we realize it's a lot more convenient for people.
Right. So I mean, I don't know if I can make an amendment or ask for an addition to this. I mean, I would think if the annual permit fee is $100 for citizens that are non-active duty and a senior one is 75, wouldn't it be fair to propose a $90 fee for military? Is that an amendment I'd have to make on the floor to this?
Yes.
So I would like to propose an amendment to this and just everything as written, but add a line that would give military folks, retirees, and active-duty military that serve our country and have proof of ID to be able to have a discounted rate. And I'm open to the idea of $90.
Second.
Can you commit that to writing, please?
I don't have those, I think that's pretty much.
I'd be happy. You added things in other than military, so if you just want to confine it to military discount, $90?
And retirees, I mean, anybody.
There's already a senior.
Doesn't matter, as a, I have dependent children who have active-duty military IDs, so it would apply to anyone who has a government-issued retiree or active-duty ID.
Could you please commit that to writing?
Sure.
Thank you. And then once it's in writing, then if you could read it aloud again, and then I believe Councilor Melendez was willing to second. But we want to make sure everybody has it in writing, especially the clerk.
So there's not much to write here since I'm just adding a line to the table that's already here.
You need to include.
So under, one moment, please. Under the line.
Councilor Bordelon?
I'd like to read what I'm saying.
You need to include all the specifics.
Okay, what I'm saying here is, is under that line, there's a grid, and it's, there's no language there, it just says annual permit, existing and new. And then it says trip ticket. So all I'm saying is military, retiree, and dependents, $90.
You have that in writing?
Yep.
Thank you very much. And Councilor Melendez?
Second.
Thank you. Could you pass that over, Councilor Obray, please?
Sure.
And I will get it to the clerk.
This was moved by Bordelon, seconded by Melendez.
Do you need this right now? Question? Thank you.
Madam Mayor? I have a question.
One moment.
May I just quickly ask? It says military, then it says retiree, then it says dependents.
So in the military, you can have an active-duty ID, and the dependents would have an ID if they're, if they're under the age of, I believe, 21. If they're retiree, they also have a dependent ID up until the age of 21, or it can be for the spouse. So that's why it says military, dependent, or retiree.
So Councilor Bordelon, as the maker of the motion, you could speak first if you would like.
No, I just think this is important. I mean, we live in a town that serves the military, call ourselves the military capital of the world, and I think it's important that we start adding those lines in our town to prove that, that we truly support that in its entirety. I think with military moving in this town frequently, it's important to make sure they have the access and accessibility and discounts for our military dependents and active duties and retirees who are on fixed incomes is really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Just a question. I know there's some retirees that may be over the age of 65, so we may want to reiterate that they still can pay the $75 before we.
Thank you, that's a good point.
Do I want to make an amendment to it?
Mr. Hanover, what's your, what's your opinion on this? As far as, does that need to be specified, or will the people?
No, we'll have, you know, administratively, we'll have the rules so that if somebody comes in with an ID, if they're under 65, they would pay $90. If they're over 65, it automatically revert to 75, whether they're military or not.
I just figured I'd say it out loud so people.
Yes, thank you.
Watching would know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors wish to speak?
Just one correction, if I can. You had mentioned hazardous materials. Just so you know, that can be done any weekend, you just have to find the town that's taking it, but it doesn't necessarily go to landfill, or better known as the dump.
Just to add, the hazardous waste collection for Groton is at fish this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00, I believe.
Thank you. Councilor Obray, are you having further remarks at this point?
No, thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Councilor Bordelon, for your second time?
Yeah, I just had a quick question regarding the card access. Is there any attempt to get that going?
The credit card access?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been in discussions with the finance director, so it's going to take some time because they're intimately involved in that process, so, but we are working on it.
I just wanted to ask a question. Do you feel the need to speak to the finance department before we even make this adjustment, or are you comfortable that it's sufficient to go ahead?
I'm comfortable sufficient to go ahead, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, you concur? Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the motion as amended, which adds a line. And Madam Clerk, would you read the line that is being added, please, just for the public?
Military, retirees, independents at the rate of $90.
Thank you. All those in favor of the, I'm sorry?
I don't think our mic was on.
Mr. Greeley's coming out to check your mic, or Liam is actually coming out, I'm sorry.
All right, let's try it again.
There you go.
The fee structure to include military, retirees, current active-duty military and retirees and their dependents at a fee rate of $90.
Thank you for reading that.
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councilors, or eight members of the authority. And we are down to Roman numeral six, adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Bordelon, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, we are adjourned at, let me get back to my clock, 6:51. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just like, you know, apparently there's still an ongoing issue with audio online, so I've had a couple of people reach out to me about that, just to let you know, they are actively working on it.
In what respect? With the close?
There's no audio. No, there's no audio.
Okay.
So they are actively working on it, and the recording, of course, would be fine, but just wanted to let the council know.
Okay. Do you need us to take a couple-minute break and give them time?
I can check on.
Yes, please. Do, oh, you have, they have audio.
Oh, they do, okay, just got a message, just tell them, okay.
All right, so we are finished with the Groton Resource Recovery Authority meeting, so that's all done. So now, we are going to the second thing for this evening, which is our council meeting, and I'm just going to go ahead because I think they're ready. So good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, July 6th. It is currently 6:52 PM, and we are now convened for the regular town council meeting.
Present this evening, we have Mayor Granatowski, Councilor Bordelon, Councilor Bumgardner, Councilor Franco, Councilor Melendez, Councilor Obray, Councilor Parker, Councilor Zepiri, total of eight councilors present, not present this evening, Councilor Heed.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And if we could stand, please, for a salute to the flag, and would Mrs. Villagra lead us in the salute to the flag that's behind us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We have no recognitions, awards, and memorials this evening. We are on to item number four, Roman numeral four, which is the public hearing, 2021-3872, Sandy Hollow Road resurfacing. And Madam Clerk, would you read the call for the hearing, please?
Yes, thank you. Let's see, notice of public hearing. The notice is hereby given that the Groton Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 6th at 6:30 PM pursuant to a resolution adopted at its meeting held on June 1st, 2021, in accordance with Article 5 of the Groton Code of Ordinances, designation of scenic roads. This meeting may be held at the Groton Senior Center, 102 Newtown Road, or via Zoom and shown live on GMTV to consider a resurface of Sandy Hollow Road dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 30th day of June 2021, as it was posted in the day paper.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. And we have no one signed up to speak at the public hearing. Mr. Hanover, did you wish to introduce the item for this evening?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Sandy Hollow Road, where the eastern portion is what we're looking at, which is, runs from Allen Street to High Street. This has a pavement condition index of 38, which is in poor condition. Our pavement management program identified this road to be repaved this year, and it was approved in our FYE 22 CIP program. Sandy Hollow Road is designated as a scenic road, and as such, under this town's ordinance, any alteration which includes paving requires a public hearing and then the town council to approve the work if they find it acceptable to do so. So Public Works is requesting that we be allowed to repave Sandy Hollow Road from Allen Street to High Street. We're not proposing any widening, grade changes, or any other improvements other than simply replacing the pavement that's there and putting the curbing back. That's it, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hanover. And seeing as we have no one signed up to speak, yes, sir, did you wish to speak?
I do.
If you could come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and I'll write it down on the list.
Oh, good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Good to you also, sir. My name is Jeff Richards, I live at 220 Cliff Street, Mystic, and I just have one comment about the road proposal that you're bringing up. For at least 50 years, there's been this terrible bump at the joint juncture of Sandy Hollow Road and High Street, going over and bumping week after week, year after year. And when High Street was recently resurfaced, it made it even worse. So, does repaving going to fix that finally? Maybe you could help with that?
Yes, it will. I'm very familiar with the bump you're talking about, and that will be straightened out when we repave the road.
Thank you. And I see no one else has signed up to speak. All right, as such, we will close the public hearing, and it is 6:57. All right. We are on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concern. Ms. Alexander, we all set?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, it is Tuesday, July 6th at 6:58 PM, and we are convening the Town Council Committee of the Whole Special Meeting. Councilors are all present with the exception of Councilor Heed, who is absent and notified us, so we are at eight councilors, which is a quorum. New business is 3A, 2021-3873, Sandy Hollow Road resurfacing. And this is Councilor Franco.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the resurfacing of Sandy Hollow Road. I so move.
Seconded, Parker? Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. And this will come before us at the council meeting coming up. Let me go back. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2021-387. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously.
Definitely needed.
And I will entertain a motion to adjourn the cowl.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Bumgardner, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of adjourning the cowl, please say aye.
Aye.
Can I ask a question?
We moved to adjourn already.
Okay.
And we voted to adjourn, so we are.
I gotta wait for him.
Or just speak up. Eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. We are adjourned at 6:59 PM. Now, we are reconvening the council meeting at 6:59 PM. Thank you, Mr. Hanover. Let me make a note of these times. 6:58 to 6:59.
I just, I got a message that some people are saying that there is, there is sound on GMTV YouTube, but not on the GMTV through the TVC Atlantic broadband cable. That was three minutes ago.
I mean, just only making a point, we have audio going through. It's something going on.
So Mr. Greeley, in response to that, Mr. Greeley just said that it is a storm-related issue? It could be a storm-related issue because you have audio going?
It's a cable TV issue.
Cable TV issue going, thank you.
We do have audio on YouTube.
We do have audio?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So 7:00, we are reconvening the town council meeting. I think I didn't skip anything else, so we're good. All right, so we are on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. It is 7:00. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table, I have it here, and I'll double check before we close it out. At the front of the meeting room, when you are recognized, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. All right, so let me get my timer ready. And this is five minutes. And the first person on the citizens' petitions is Eugenia Villagra. If you could come forward, followed by Catherine Pratt, please.
Hello, everyone. It's really great to be here and see you all live, and to be live myself. My name is Eugenia Villagra, and I live at 76 Riverview Avenue in Groton. Good evening, Mayor Granatowski, town councilors, and town staff. I am here tonight representing Groton Conservation Advocates and myself to express to all of you our sincere thanks to this forward-thinking town council for strongly supporting the acquisition of the Waters or Wolfbrook property at the June 8th cowl meeting, and now again tonight. For 30 years, this property has been highly ranked for protection by both the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and by the town's Conservation Commission because of its extraordinary environmental values. One of the largest vernal pools in New England is an outstanding feature of this property as part of a series of five vernal pools. It also features a large pond, which, with Eggleston Brook and its tributaries, supports adjacent wetlands, the most environmentally productive ecosystem of all. And because the property is located between three protected areas in Groton, Pequot Woods, the Sheep Farm, and Candlewood Hill, it will add another vital piece to Groton's central greenway. Now more than ever, it is important to protect more land for a more sustainable Groton. Thank you for this final yes vote to approve the purchase and sales agreement for the Wolfbrook
Thank you. We have Catherine Pratt, followed by Genevieve Searf.
Hi, my name is Catherine Pratt, and I live at 75 Front Street in Nowank. Mayor Granatowski and members of the town council. Town officials have said that there is nothing more that town council can do regarding the development of the Mystic Oral School until there is a viable project. In fact, there is something the town council can do. It can and should hold Restfler Homes in default for failing to meet the requirements of the development agreement and take steps immediately to terminate the contract. The February 11th, 2020 agreement, which names Restfler Exclusive Developer, is a losing proposition for the town. As our first example, Section 2.03 gives the developer the right to, at its sole discretion, acquire additional properties, including but not limited to properties abutting the oral school property, to include in the project. No wonder the developer wanted a floating zone. As stated by Jim Furlong in the day, quote, "If taken literally, this language would allow Restfler to buy all of Mystic with only the Planning and Zoning Commission to stop it," unquote. Section 3.01 allows Restfler on or before closing to, quote. Section 3.01 allows Restler on or before closing to, quote, "create a single-purpose entity to act as the exclusive developer of the project," unquote. This enables him to secure a taxpayer-backed revenue stream, tax credits and abatements, zoning approvals, and all other approvals, and, with no vetting whatsoever by the town or the state, to create a substitute entity to develop the property before construction has even begun. More land grabbing is built into Section 3.02, which provides for parking and trails outside the property as may be permitted by DEEP or, quote, "any other governmental authority having jurisdiction over such improvements," unquote. The only other governmental authority with such jurisdiction would appear to be the town, which owns forty acres of adjacent conservation land. This land is held in the public trust and should not be part of this contract. Now consider what TIF monies will pay for, according to Section 9.01, roads, utilities, a parking garage, the hazardous building materials abatement, and environmental remediation of all existing buildings on the site, and other projects as chosen by the developer. Even if the buildings were demolished, taxpayers are on the hook for enormous expenses. But the biggest shock of all may be Section 6.04, which asks for town assistance with easements and acquisition of private property for roads and utility infrastructure. Is eminent domain being contemplated? The development agreement requires the town to advocate for and cooperate with Restler, and they have done so in good faith. They gave him tax relief through the fixed assessment agreement. They pursued a zoning amendment. They wrote an op-ed endorsing his proposal, and they produced the GMTV Mystic River Bluffs infomercial. Restler, for his part, has abused the town's trust. At least as of April 2021, he has missed multiple deadlines, which the town has not enforced, such as the deadline of November 11th, 2020, for negotiating a long-term lease for the town to use the Pratt Building, and the deadlines of May 11th, 2020, for, one, a preliminary and conceptual draft of the development plan for town review and comment, Section 3.03; two, the terms of tax increment financing and credit enhancement and how TIF will be used, Section 9.01; three, notice of any subdivisions required and submission of a subdivision application to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Section 5.02; and, four, notice of town assistance required for easements and acquisition of private property for roadways and/or utilities, Section 6.04. It would be disastrous for taxpayers if the state sold the property to Restler for a dollar and left the town accountable for all the deliverables promised in the agreement with an untrustworthy business partner...
You have one minute.
...or a surrogate entity created by him to boot. The Department of Administrative Services did not renew his lease. The Planning and Zoning Commission has indicated that they will not support a floating zone or other drastic zone change. I respectfully urge the Town Council to further extricate us by holding Restler in default for failure to perform his contractual obligations. Protection of the public interest must be the first priority. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We have Genevieve Surf, followed by Jim Furlong. If I would ask everybody to silence their devices, please. Thank you. Genevieve Surf, followed by Jim Furlong?
Yes, do as you wish.
Yes, if you have written comments, if you could give them to the clerk, please. Thank you.
Did you want me to go with the last one?
No, this is fine.
I didn't hear you. Hold on. My name is Genevieve Surf. I'm at 6 Pearl Street in Mystic. I want clapping, too. You took all my fun away, Patricia. So I'm here to talk yet again about this project, the Mystic Oral Property, and I just realized I now have a folder this thick with all kinds of documents about it. It's getting more and more complex, and I'm still, I'm a person who likes complexity. You know, I have a PhD in electrical engineering. You can't get a PhD in electrical engineering unless you know how to solve a lot of problems and do a lot of math. And the math that I see here is just that amazing amount of one dollar, you know, for forty gorgeous acres, you know, on one of the highest points in Mystic. And no guarantee whatsoever, as far as I can make out, about any of the commitments are, what the accountability is going to be, what happens if we have legal problems, how on earth can we allow somebody to go up there in what is probably close to pure granite at the top and start blasting? If any of you has ever seen blasting through granite, or somebody trying to get through granite, I can personally vouch for the fact that it's almost impossible to get through solid granite. We had somebody in Groton Long Point who tried to get rid of that big boulder in the middle of four lots because it was preventing him from selling the lots. It was a historic boulder, actually, because the British hid behind there, no, the American rebels hid behind there and lured the British into a Palmer Cove by hiding behind a rock, and then they jumped out from the rock, and evidently I ambushed them very successfully. Anyway, the person who was trying to get rid of the rock was not allowed to blast, so they drilled, and they drilled all summer long to get rid of a rock that maybe was the size of the circumference of this table. Now, I worry about things like this because I think, for instance, you know, we're a very litigious society. You know, what if there's damage to the properties in the neighborhood? And from what I hear, some of them are on sewer, some of them have their own wells and their own septic tanks, and of course, everybody's got foundations, which are, you know, sometimes good, sometimes not good. What if the foundations crack? You know, as, as somebody said, who's gonna pay for this mess? I don't see any of that in any of these agreements. All I see in the agreements that the state has with Mr. Restler and we have with Mr. Restler, is we're basically gonna do a whole bunch of things for him. And even that, what we're gonna do is not clear. So I think, you know, it really upsets me that this is viewed as a NIMBY problem. It's not at all a NIMBY problem, except for those people whose foundations are gonna get cracked and whose wells are gonna possibly get poisoned. But for instance, running a new road through his new property to whatever exit there's going to be. And by the way, I was there several times this weekend, and I saw people going by at sixty, seventy miles an hour. One of the things that I think you ought to do before you start ticketing people on Pearl Street, particularly residents who can't find a place to park, because every car on Pearl Street is from out of town now, and you have not taken that plan into account of your parking plan, is that where are the residents supposed to, where are their families supposed to park when they come to visit? Where are their friends supposed to park when they come have dinner? Zero places for residents, zero passes, zero anything, and I'll talk more about that at some other time. But this really worries me. Are we, are we gonna pay for some of that infrastructure? Are we gonna pay for water mains like we offered to pay for a certain property owner to build infrastructure off Flanders Road?
Do you have one minute?
You know, that was ten million dollars just to go a couple of miles. But at the time when the plan was made, we had the numbers, even before we started studying what the best thing... They'd given us the numbers, approximately what it was gonna cost, approximately, you know, the bond, what it was gonna cost to repay, the interest and everything, and approximately how it was gonna increase property values along the road, so we would know when we would get our money back. I mean, and I remember that Mick O'Barron had done the math, and he said we were basically never gonna get our money back because the way it was, the way it was worked out, there wasn't gonna be enough increase in value on the property that we were gonna get our money back. And, you know, Mick shouted this on the rooftops for months before people finally agreed that he was right and voted down this Flanders Road project. But it really astonishes me that in a town where every little number is calculated down to the, you know, micro penny, that the only number that we have right now is this one-dollar number. Could you please do us a favor and, you know, start leaning on staff and developer to get us more numbers, even if they're rough numbers? Give us something more than just that one dollar.
Thank you. Mr. Furlong, followed by Mr. Richards. Jim Furlong, and then Jeffrey Richards, please.
Good evening, Town Councilors. Mayor Granatowski, Town Manager, Mr. Burt. My name is Jim Furlong. I live at 57 Fish Town Lane in Mystic. My topic is the Mystic Education Center. Restler Homes apparently is blaming the town now for the company's continuing failure to produce an acceptable plan to redevelop the Mystic Education Center. The town was named, I'm sorry, the company was named developer in, on November 7th, 2019, and it became the exclusive developer later. Here's what Ray Careman, a Restler consultant, said in a video accompanying a story in last Sunday's day. He said, "We refunded to an RFP, Request Proposal, that was put out by the DECD and the Town of Groton. The RFP had specific goals that they wanted to accomplish with the redevelopment of this, and so the project was designed, given the parameters of the RFP. It's become apparent that not everyone was aligned with the RFP in the town, and now we need to incorporate that feedback into what we're doing." That's the end of that quote. What's wrong with this statement? The steady astonishment and anger generated by Restler's response to the RFP are not primarily the town's fault, though the town may not be completely blameless. I see nothing in the RFP that calls for crowding a grossly outsized development of 750 to 931 apartments into a wooded plain above the scenic Mystic River Valley. What I do see in the RFP, among other things, is a guideline calling for construction that complements the surrounding area. The Resper Plan mocks that guideline. The project is gridlocked now, and the town, and the state has decided not to renew Restler's rental agreement. Serious problems of public trust in Restler Homes as a developer have arisen as negative information missed in the initial vetting has surfaced. Restler Homes has had its turn at the bat. It is time to learn from our lessons and start over, this time with a process that builds trust rather than destroys it. We should look at a land use of appropriate size that respects and measures up to this beautiful and historical setting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furlong. Jeffrey Richards, followed by Alma Richards.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Councilors. It's nice to be back where we can see each other. It's a relief. Yeah, but I want to talk to you about something a little different. It pertains to the Mystic Education Center, but if you recall, just a few minutes ago, we all faced back that way and set a pledge to the American flag. And guess what? We just had the Fourth of July celebration about our rights as citizens. One of those rights is called freedom of speech, and that's, that's why I'm allowed to be up here talking with you, because we've agreed as countrymen that we should have that. So, I was kinda disturbed at a recent council meeting when some people got up like they have already today to speak about problems we see for the town and the Resper proposal at the Mystic Education Center. And at one of those meetings, one of the councilors was told, after all the comments had been received, that they weren't allowed to make any comments to the presenters. Now, I want to tell you, as councilors, you have the same right of free speech whenever you want to take it that I do. And so, the idea that we're gonna give ourselves as a town a new lesson and by having a gag order about responding to citizens is one of the, one of the worst displays of democracy I've witnessed in decades. And I think you really ought to be speaking to us from, we come to speak to you, some of us practice, some of us don't. But I'd like to tell you that I've met many of the people who have presented to you many problems with the Mystic Oral School project that's currently on the books, and we get hardly anything in response. And okay, you do listen to us, but some of the, some of the questions are for more information. And we've gotten a lot of information, but most of it we don't like. Why don't we like it? Because it's a RU-80 area, and it should be maintained that way. Why? Because some of you voted for the town charter, which says that's what it's supposed to be out there. So what? We're gonna just decide to vacate the town charter now? So, a lot of things on this whole project have been done backwards, and so that's, that's why we're so upset. That's why a lot of the people back here are upset. So, I just wanted to maybe give you a little civics lesson that just because you're a Town Councillor doesn't mean you have to be quiet. I think gag orders should go to the town attorney, actually, for advising you on that subject. So, that's all I wanted to say to you, other than I do support the comments of others in the audience here about doing something more positive about fixing the Mystic Oral School project. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Alma Richards, followed by Susan Griffin.
Hello, I'm Alma Richards. The 220 Cliff...
Do you want to tip it down a little bit, maybe?
Yeah.
I feel your pain.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Hello, I'm Alma Richards. I live at 220 Cliff Street on the other half of him. I just wanted to make a comment that there have been a lot of info, non-info, what have you, floating around. One of the things that you have not done for us Q citizens who pay taxes is you have not done what we call a spreadsheet. That's where you write down how much taxes and wonderful things you're going to get by the Mystic Oral School project, and then you subtract from that the loans he wants us to carry for him, the roads we'll have to make, the addition to our septic system, the addition to our schools, and then you look at what the number at the bottom is. You know, you are, you are working with a guy with a golden tongue. He will say whatever you want to hear. You need to be wise. End of comment.
Susan Griffin, followed by Robert Welch.
Good evening. My name is Susan Griffin. I live at 74 Cal Hill Road in the Mystic section of Groton. I would like to speak tonight in opposition to the Restler mega-development project. I do support renovations of the Mystic Oral School. I've lived there for fifteen years, walked my dog there two or three times a day, every day, for the past fifteen years, three actual different dogs, three golden retrievers. I know that school and my husband as well, probably, but better than anyone in this room right now, and I do support doing something with that land because it is, it's very sad to see what's happened. I do support that in the adjourning properties, as long as it's within the RU-80 zoning as discussed at the recent planning and zoning workshop. I agree with the previous comments regarding serious concerns of the mega-development, and ask that the Town Council take immediate steps to withdraw from the present contracts with Restler Homes and commit to a more appropriate use of this valuable resource. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Welch, followed by Becca Welch.
Good evening. Robert Welch, 18 Boulder Court, Mystic. As a Groton resident... As a Groton resident and taxpayer, I urge the members of the town council to withdraw their support for the current plan of development of the Oral School site, and direct the town manager to terminate Groton's relationship with the Restler Homes. Thank you.
Becca Welch, followed by Wanda Tillman.
Hello, it's nice to see you all in person. I'm Becca Welch, 32 Boulder Court. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed development at the Oral School. What may have initially seemed like a good idea has been shown to be much different than the rosy pictures painted in the beginning of the process. Thanks to the efforts of involved concerned citizens, Groton has learned numerous alarming details about the impact of the proposed development, the background of the chosen developer, and the appalling mismatch between the carefully conceived plan of conservation and development and the vision of Restler Homes. To paraphrase Maya Angelou, "When you know better, you do better." Councillor Bordelon had the courage to withdraw her support when she learned more about this project, and I thank her for that. I hope that the rest of the council will join her. This is your chance to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Wanda Tillman, followed by Penelope Miller.
I am Wanda Tillman, 925 River Road. The town and the state totally disregarded existing zoning regulations and the plan of conservation and development, put into place after years of considered public hearings, debates, open meetings, and conversation with town taxpayers when issuing RFPs for the Mystic Oral School project. From the announcement of the preferred developer to this date, the project is a moving target, much of which is shrouded in secrecy and obfuscations. FOI requests are constant, with few proper responses, and most of them are not timely. Emails have been deleted. The development agreement between Restler Homes and the town is designed so that the town staff and elected officials must support the project and do what is necessary to give the developer a floating zone. I urge all of you in the greater audience to read this document. It is posted on the Mystic Oral School Advocates website. The development agreement is a frightful document, which attempts to circumvent open public hearings and pit the town staff and town council against taxpayers without listening to objections and concerns for such an intense development. We must keep in mind throughout that Restler was convicted of conspiracy to bribe and paying of bribes, conspiracy to falsify documents, conspiring to perjury, even though these were See what's happening here. See what this man is capable of doing. See of what questions he raises in the minds of those in the general public who find this project shrouded in secrecy and obfuscation. So I have questions about that lovely frightful document. Since it is supposedly a binding legal document, has the town already committed us to a floating zone for the benefit of Jeffrey Restler? Without the creation of such a zone through the proper channels, the public hearing and the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission? And did the town bind itself to provide the same type of zoning in a floating zone to any property that Restler might acquire in the entire town of Groton? I have very many concerns that we might be targeting one of these six schools that are also open for redevelopment to have in this floating zone. And is there a process to create such a zone? According to JUDZONES, there's no process delineated in town governments' documents. My major concern, I think, for all of the surrounding area, although it is a huge town-wide problem for this, when a person purchases a home, it's the single greatest expenditure for most people in their lives. They buy in areas with reliance on building and zoning codes inherent in the purchase. Residential, to remain residential, knowing that a commercial zone cannot be built next door. RU-80 is two-acre zoning. All of us little people who have to comply with that are required to adhere, adhere to this unless there are grave extenuating circumstances, if changes are proposed and orderly process is to be engaged upon. In the 2016 brownfield grant, it was checked that zoning changes for ideas within would be pursued at an appropriate future time.
Do you have one minute?
The ideas were mixed-use, age-restricted, high-end residential, and a school. From a townwide view, the appropriate time would have been prior to an issuance of RFPs. It would have gained public confidence and support for the ensuing development agreements. This is what planning means, not what is happening now. Projects of this magnitude proposed sprung upon the town post-town development agreement signing makes a travesty of open and transparent governance. Please, please, vote on this. Please hold Mr. Restler in non-compliance. He has done nothing to bring forward this project. He has nothing, he has done nothing that you have bound yourselves to in this agreement and bound the town in this agreement. He's done nothing, nothing at all, since 2019 to bring this project any further forward. Thank you.
Penelope Miller, followed by Scott Westerveld.
I am Penny Miller, 56 Hancock Drive. Good evening, Town Councilors and residents. The Planning and Zoning Commission has said that it will not create a special floating zone for the Mystic Oral School, and that it favors keeping the existing zoning of RU-80, or possibly changing it to RU-40. Keeping the existing zoning, or something similar, precludes a mega-development, such as the one envisioned by Jeffrey Restler on the site. Redevelopment of the Mystic Oral School under RU-80 or RU-40 zoning regulations would not be workable under the existing request for proposals, which requires that the original school buildings be rehabilitated by the developer. Most of these buildings are over 100 years old. The school was closed in 1980, and the buildings have been mostly unused and neglected for 41 years. Rehabbing or demolishing these buildings will have a multimillion-dollar price tag. No developer should be saddled with the remediation of these buildings. We need to start over with a new RFP, with a new request for proposals. Therefore, what the town must do now is terminate the development agreement with Restler Homes. The town must also persuade the state to rescind the purchase and sales, its purchase and sales agreement with Restler Homes. And the town must work with the state to secure funding to rehab or demolish the Oral School buildings. It was, after all, the state that let the buildings remain derelict for so long. It is my hope that the residents of Groton and our elected officials at both the town and the state level can work together this next time around to redevelop the Mystic Oral School into an asset for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Westerveld, followed by Janet Mayer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Councilors. My name is Scott Westerveld. I live at 7 Boulder Court in Mystic, Connecticut. I'm going to talk a little bit about the infrastructure improvements that are bound to happen because of this. There's a large concern, and it's kind of been skirted over, that the, the roads around there, including Boulder Court, including Oral School Road, as well as Cal Hill Road, and the intersections at Lambfair and Cal Hill, as well as Ledgeland and Mystic and Cal Hill, those intersections are likely going to need improving, because in a, in a worst-case scenario, with 931 new apartments up in that area, you're going to include, or you're going to add roughly 1,700 new cars, and then you've also got, that's just for the residents, then you've also got the construction vehicles, you've also got the people who are going to work at the mega-development. Jen, I'll give you a number that you can look at. I do traffic for a living, and I can tell you that the traffic improvements that are going to be required at those intersections are going to run in the neighborhood of $250,000 to $350,000 each, and that's a minimum number. And then you've got to worry about the roadway improvements that have to happen to join those intersections together. So that's going to be a lot, excuse me, that's going to be a very large amount of money for somebody to have to pay. Now, Dev Jones at the planning workshop, we were told that off-site improvements cannot be required for site plan and subdivision approvals. A commission has some ability to require off-site improvements as part of special permit approvals, but it also goes on to say that a developer can volunteer to make off-site improvements as part of their application. Mr. Restler can put it in his application all day long that he's going to volunteer to make these improvements. However, he's got a credibility issue. Again, talking about the, the charges that he was given. Yes, they were pled down to misdemeanors. You don't plead up, you plead down. The fel, or excuse me, the bribery and the conspiracy, some of those, I believe, were felonies that were pled down to misdemeanors. So it's not just a single misdemeanor that he faced, he faced multiple charges. He can't be, he has not been trusted, or he has not proven himself trustworthy in the towns that he's working in now, and I don't see that he's going to be trustworthy in the town of Groton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Janet Mayer, followed by Roseanne Katusky.
Good evening, Janet Mayer, 88 Ann Avenue, Mystic, Connecticut. Dear Town Council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I've spoken to you regarding the proposed Mystic River Bluffs development many times in the past. To quickly summarize my concerns, the development size and scope is too large for the surrounding infrastructure, and in my opinion, will jeopardize the safety of Groton citizens by creating unsolvable traffic issues. It is not compatible with the plan of conservation and development or the redevelopment of Mystic Oral School report, plain and simple. The possible costs and risks involved with a project of this magnitude have not been determined. The use of TIF can be risky. The proposed developer has pled guilty to bribery, perjury, and kickbacks in a joint city, state, and federal investigation case. The proposed developer has not had a project anywhere near this size or scale. The proposed developer has unfinished projects. The proposed developer has not been vetted properly. Groton citizens have been allowed little input, and at times their concerns have been characterized as misinformation, afraid of change, or not in my backyard. The process by which this developer was chosen has been less than transparent, and in my opinion, very flawed from what I've been able to see. The video put out by Restler does not constitute a desperately needed, well-researched risk analysis by the town. The video put out by Restler and the survey designed to craft compelling strategy does not constitute input from the community. Freedom of information requests have had to been issued time and time again to find out what's going on. It was not until recently that many pertinent documents were posted. The fact that Restler RFP was scanned in without the anti-kickback acknowledgement and the non collusion affidavit when they were to be attached to the RFP, when all the other submitted RFPs from the developer had both, or one scanned in, demonstrates a lack of detention to detail. The anti-kickback and non collusion were later posted, and then both appeared to be notarized when only one document required it. The development agreement appears to have parts that favor the developer. We're told that we're, it's, it's early in the process, but at the same time, there are binding terms. I've heard that the developer has missed deadlines, and now are we holding him to deadlines? When does he have to present to the PZC? Is there a timeline for that? Will he be allowed to continue to delay? Perhaps waiting for lumber prices to go down, for the PZC makeup to change, or to acquire more Groton non-contiguous property to add to his mega-development? This weekend, we took one of our favorite historical beautiful walks in the Groton Heights neighborhood. As we strolled by the Groton Heights School, which is now excess property, I thought to myself that it, it seems developers get paid to develop, the state is probably under pressure to rid itself of these unwanted properties and brownfields, planners probably build resumes by promoting development, and that our towns are under pressure to bring in tax money. That's a lot of pressure to develop, but who is responsible for making sure that the development is not full of risks, that it promotes and maintains the value and character of Groton, and has an overall vision of what this community really wants? Has that been lost in this frenzied, opaque process? I fear it has. The process by which we ended up where we are must be evaluated, and the project needs to be stopped. Please help to keep Groton the community we all love. I count on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Roseanne Katusky.
Roseanne Katusky, 24 Ann Avenue, RTM District 5. I do not support the Mystic Oral School mega-development proposal, and I vote. Tonight, I have two things to comment on: the development deal and claims by Ms. O'Bri at the May Town Council meeting. Recently, David Collins wrote, "It now looks like it will be the citizen volunteers on the Planning and Zoning Commission who will come to the rescue of the paid professionals in Groton who cultivated this frightening proposal, setting up a complicated agreement in which the town pledges to help him, even suggesting elaborate tax incentives." It's time for the town council to end the deal with Restler. Please read the development deal. There is nothing in it for the town. It is available on the Mystic Oral School Advocates website and the town website. Just like Dorothy in the Land of Oz, the town council has had a way out of this disaster the entire time. What is it, you might ask? Follow the town's own regulations. The proposed development does not meet the zoning regulations, the wetlands regulations, or the plan of conservation and development. That's enough reason to end the development agreement. So why won't the town council support a project that follows the town's own land use regulations? There could be many reasons. One of the reasons probably is that rogue, self-serving, self-important, resume-building town staff sent them down the Yellow Brick Road. In an email dated May 13th, 2021, from the town manager to the town council, he states, quote, "It's," meaning Mystic Oral School proposal, "is a project much, that is much bigger than we've handled here before, and further complications got added to the mix." End, quote, "The staff have to worry about this directly affecting our careers when people call for our resignations or say we are taking bribes." Quote. Shouldn't town staff be supporting projects for Groton that are reasonable and that they can handle? Shouldn't town staff be worried more about the town of Groton and not their careers? But instead, they teamed up with a criminal developer for a project that admittedly is much bigger than they have handled before. Why, after all the alarming details regarding the mega-development proposal, is the town council dug in? Is it because it's an election year? There is only one way to change that: change the town council. Groton voters should ask all town council candidates and all RTM candidates from District 5, "Do you or don't you support the mega-development proposal at the Mystic Oral School property?" If the answer is yes, don't vote for them. Just because you can vote for nine town council candidates and six RTM candidates does not mean that you must. Vote for candidates that support you and not the Mystic Oral School mega-development. Now, regarding what happened at the May Town Council meeting with Ms. O'Bri, talk about living in the Land of Oz. If you are listening to Ms. O'Bri's dramatic statements regarding receiving abusive emails from... If you were listening to Ms. O'Bree's dramatic statements regarding receiving abusive emails, you wonder, you may wonder, what abusive emails? What is she talking about? That's what I wondered. So, I requested to view the alleged abusive emails. At first she claimed that she had deleted them. Of course, that can't be true. Why? Because in 2021, with the existing technology, nothing is deleted permanently. So, the town manager had IT go through her emails. Of course, IT didn't do it for free. They were paid by the taxpayers to do it. Then I was sent at least 42 emails that I was supposed to decide which ones were abusive. None were abusive. Some of the emails were not even on topic. It was just a ridiculous waste of time and taxpayers' dime. So, then she said the alleged abusive-
You have one minute remaining?
Thank you. So, then she said the alleged abusive emails were on her- ...email for town business. Could it be because personal emails cannot be obtained through freedom of information? But something else that is concerning and disturbing here is the reason why she made the claim that she is receiving, quote, "abusive emails" and she wants it to stop. Why would Ms. O'Bree state that she has received abusive emails when there is no documentation to support her claim? Because she wanted to and did disparage and cast shade on an entire group of people who disagree with her. That's why, and I think it's despicable. Thank you.
I have no one else signed up to speak this evening? Is there anyone else here who has not signed up that wishes to address the council? All right. Thank you very much. We are on to Romanum Rule 46, rather. Response to Citizens' Petitions, Comments, and Concerns. I would ask that we address each other courteously. I should have said this before we started the other part this evening. Counselor O'Bree. Counselor O'Bree. Thank you.
You know, what one person may find distasteful, another person may not. The emails that I received through the town, many of them were very distasteful. They were condescending. They were rude. And I didn't feel that I needed to subject myself to that, and that's the statement that I made. What Roseanne overlooks is the fact that I am very easy to reach because I'm a real estate agent and you can go on any place you want and find my email, which is what many people did. And so, I received emails at home as well as the ones that I received through the town. And I feel it's my right to make a decision as to what I need to be subject to. Now, you feel that you haven't been treated correctly, and I'm not saying that I disagree with that, but I think to be singled out for a statement after the many months that I've sat on this council and worked on a lot of very good projects, I take this as an example of being rude. Just to mention to the speaker that spoke about it, Groton Heights, Colonel Leggett, Pleasant Valley, Valley, and William Sealy are all under contract. Now, they have been delayed by what we've all gone through and many of us have experienced delays, but we do have ongoing projects. And I think you're going to see some very nice opportunities come out of what's being worked on. And we don't seem to have too much of an outcry telling us that we're doing a bad job with those. But I just want to say, you know, it's okay. I mean, I can sit up here and you can share with me your thoughts about it and I'm more than willing to listen. I try to open my mind when people are talking to me respectfully. And I can understand your concerns. But I also know, in reference to what one gentleman said, we pay very good money for a town attorney. And to, if we were paying him and not going by his advice, I think that would be poor on our part because then we could be putting the town in a position where we could be opening lawsuits. So, I hope you will recognize that we do try to listen to the attorneys that are giving us guidance. I'm sure many other people will want to say something about different things, but the one thing that I keep hoping that maybe, maybe everybody would understand is that we are not the ones making the decision right now. We have to wait until the state makes their decision. At that time, we can do a little bit more.
Your time is up. Thank you.
That was five minutes?
That was three. We get three. Any other councilors wish to respond to Citizens' Petitions? Counselors of Perry and then Bordelain.
I have to agree with Counselor O'Bree. I heard Representative Katsowski repeatedly refer to abusive emails. And I have a little hearing defect and I was hearing abusive females. And I thought we were getting a dose of that. We were getting a dose of that. There are a lot of people coming up and they're condemning us personally. I can assure you that the council has volunteered its time, has no kickback from the developments that we're producing, and we are trying to act in the best interest of the town. And that has been the motivation to go forward with this. I just think that the personal comments about our lack of integrity- I think that the, I think that some of the comments about inadequate infrastructure are something that we should consider, and you've brought our attention to those things. However, I don't think this is, that we have a place for people condemning individuals on this council. These people come and put in hours, countless hours, every week, trying to work for the betterment of Groton. They do it at their own expense. No one pays them for it. In fact, frequently, we find ourselves doing things that cost money and we pay out of our own pockets. We're not here to generate any hostility toward people in a particular part of town. We're here to develop the town as best we can. So, I think that the only thing I would say to those people who are very articulate about implying that we are negligent and that we are not considering essential issues, I wish that you would step up and take public office and apply your intellect to making town better instead of sitting back and coming up with the slurs that we've heard and the slurs that have occurred in the emails and the letters to the editor. We're doing our best and sure, we can make some mistakes, but we'll do our best to correct them as we go along. So, I just think that we should keep it on a higher level than it has been. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everyone who has spoke tonight. Obviously, if I go through the list, then I'll run out of my three minutes. I appreciate the speaker who spoke about the three minutes, about the freedom of speech. As tonight, you know, one of our councilors wanted to continue to speak, but we only get three minutes, yet we're muted again. And that should not happen, but that is something through this council, through the rules, which they changed. In response to all the things regarding Rasppler and slander of the emails and in account and some of the responses that were stated, I didn't find them slanderish. I heard your cries loud and clear. I constantly am being criticized for how I speak and what I say, for being who I am up here. So, if, for tonight, I relate to you and I respect your thoughts. If you have a problem in the town, you have one way to do it, once a month at the public podium. That is it. And you have a right to speak up about how you feel when you feel like your wells may be contaminated or your town is not being run the way that you want it to. I didn't find those emails to be slanderish or slurs, and I did find the comment that Counselor Sebiri stated regarding the feminine remark to be offensive to me as a female. So, I hear you guys loud and clear and I think no matter what side of the issue we stand on, and you know, it's important that you come here and have a voice and you have that voice. And the response to making sure people come and get involved and be elected, that's also an interesting statement because there are people who step up and get pushed out because of their decisions in speaking up too much and too brave and too loud and too aggressive are terms that are used for me. And yet, people will box me out because of that. So, continue to come. I hear your comments. I'm here for you guys and I do not think that that development is good for the town of Groton. I support development in that area, but this is too big and there's a lot of concerns that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Are there any other councilors who wish to- Are there any other councilors who wish to speak at this time? Counselor Baumgartner.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Would like to align my comments with that, with me by Counselor Bordelain.
Can you turn it off, please?
Yes.
Are you turning? Is it on?
I got it.
Yeah, I said you're muted. It sounds like it's on now.
No, that was me.
Oh, that was you? Why don't you just, that's to go. Thank you, Counselor Parker.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. No, I just wanted to align my remarks with Counselor Bordelain respectfully, Counselor Sebiri. Refrain from using that kind of language in this setting.
Can't hear you.
We should refrain from using that kind of language in this setting, you know, as it is offensive to many people in this room, so.
Still can't hear you.
All right.
It's going to have to be closer. I'm sorry. Try that now.
Andre, you can just take it off if you want. Thank you. No, yes. So, no, I'd just like to align my remarks with Counselor Bordelain. Would just like to thank those for attending, who provided testimony tonight, for providing testimony. Obviously, a lot has transpired over the last several months. Really, a lot has transpired since we, this council last approved the purchase and sales agreement as described back in 2019. Since then, obviously, the developer has purchased multiple properties even without this, outside of the scope of the state of Connecticut property. And I think that's something this council now, that we are meeting in person, we should be scrutinizing and I think discussing a little bit more publicly how that project jives with those additional properties, considering now, you know, obviously, you know, when we entered that agreement with the state of Connecticut, it was contingent on, I'm sorry, when we, the town entered the agreement with the developer, they had multiple agreements in place with the state of Connecticut already. Since then, some of those disagreements have, the state has done away with many of those agreements, including one with respect to the lease with Mr. Rasppler for the receiving revenues for those cell towers. And that was news that has happened, I think, even since we've met as a, as a council in a regular, in a regular council meeting. With that said, you know, I think we need to continue doing our due diligence as councilors. You know, more information that is provided from the public on this matter, I think, is very important. No taxpayer should feel that they're not receiving information in a timely fashion, especially if they're issuing FOI requests. Lastly, I would ask my councilors to be very careful about disparaging the public in terms of opining on a matter that is important to them. And especially, you know, I take offense to councilors of saying that they feel targeted or singled out. You know, as a counselor, I've felt that way too on many occasions. And so, you know, there, it's, you know, we may not all agree on issues in this community, but I think it's incredibly important that as councilors, we afford the opportunity for the public to engage us and we should be able to take it because I think as councilors, we've certainly been able to take it from one another. Thank you.
I would ask if any other councilors would like to speak at this time?
I just had one point of clarification.
I'm sorry, Counselor Parker.
Sure.
Thank you all for coming out this evening. There are reasons why some of us has remained quiet, because we want additional information. You guys have brought up many concerns and it has to be discussed. We need to make sure we're doing the right thing at this proper time, but we also received a lot of information from the public. We're receiving information from our own town staff. So, give us some time to make sure we're going to do the right thing properly, please. That's all I'm asking is give us some time and just give us the opportunity to make sure we step in the right direction. I understand your concerns and many of you have spoken to us before about this and brought additional information. Everyone has, everything has to be carefully reviewed, properly reviewed before we do anything, we don't want to do anything improper. So, please give us an opportunity to look everything over and then move forward. Everything cannot be done in lickety-split. I'm sorry. A lot of things take time to review and make sure we're doing it properly. So, just give us that opportunity. Thank you.
Counselor Melendez.
Thank you. Is my mic on?
Can you talk again?
Hello?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming out and voicing your concerns. This is how democracy works. Elected officials make the best decisions that they can in the moment and then the residents tell us why we were right or why we were wrong. And that's just how the system works. So, I want to thank everybody for their feedback. I would just like to say that everybody in this process wants what's best for Groton. The residents wants what's best for Groton. The elected officials want what's best for Groton. And the town staff want what's best for Groton. There will be disagreements on what is best, but, and if you think that I'm wrong, I want you to tell me that. But I will say that the integrity of the town staff should not be called into question. I know them very well. I've worked with them very closely and I know that their intentions are sincere and their beliefs are just to do what is best for Groton. And it's okay for everybody to disagree with the conclusions that they come to of what is best for Groton, but any questioning of their integrity, I think is just wrong. So, I will continue to make the best decisions that I can in the moment and I hope that, as I know you will, continue to give me feedback. So, I just thank everybody for coming out and speaking and I hope you continue to do so.
Did you want to ask a point of clarification?
Yeah, I had a clarification for the town manager.
Mr. Rasp-
Regarding the RFPs and the vetting process, have we enacted or brought forward or planning to bring forward any changes to make sure we're criminally doing our due diligence on that end? I know in relation to what Counselor Melendez just stated, I mean, there is a part of an elected official's job where we rely on the town staff and just like a person who works in the medical field, an attorney or a doctor, it's not like you're criticizing saying that they can't do it, but when certain things fall through, you, one, questions. Everyone has to be questioned. And that's appropriate for anyone who has a situation where they feel a process has fallen through that hasn't happened the way that it should, to ask those questions and everyone has an obligation to be put on the floor for those things.
What is your point of clarification?
My point of clarification is what are we doing as far as our vetting of our RFPs moving forward? Has that changed? Because it hasn't come before the council. I had brought it up at several meetings and nothing has been brought forward of how we're going to make those change. I think that's something that should be an agenda item, that we're going to look at how we're vetting our RFPs and what that process should be.
We are looking to the process and having discussions and we will bring something to the council.
Because the other, because the question is with that RFP, is when we ask as town councilors, many times when I've asked questions, I was told I'm questioning the integrity of the staff and basically kind of ins- and basically kind of insulting them. When in fact, I'm relying on my staff in this town who are paid to do a job and are experts in that job. So, just like they were saying here about being bullied or feeling targeted, I tried to ask those questions and I'm always shot down. And I'm told, don't offend town staff. So, I just want to make sure we are in charge of all the runnings of the town and we have a right to ask questions.
Councilor Bordelone, your point of clarification was responded to by Mr. Burke.
Right, it should not be looked at as a bad thing.
Councilor Melendez, did you also have something that you wanted to ask?
I hope that we are gonna bring the RFP stuff forward. Thank you.
I would like to take my turn. Thank you. I just wanted to, let me start my timer so that I don't run over my three minutes. Thank you all for coming out. I appreciate you being here. I want to concur with Councilor Parker and Councilor Melendez. Both were very well spoken. I appreciate your thoughtfulness and your thoughtful responses. In particular, I'm concerned with the, what appears to be personal attacks on people. And I don't think it benefits any of us to move the process forward. So, I would ask in the future if we could kind of put those aside and focus on the substance of things. I think it would, it would move everybody forward in a much better way. And again, thank you for coming out. And having said that, did you wish to respond to anything? If not, I'm gonna take a five-minute recess. Okay. We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Excuse me, I wanted to finish what I was saying before when I ran out of time. I think I have the right to, if the council let me.
Council is okay with? Yes, Council Obrey.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, many of you here have come to me with different situations over the last few years. Roseanne being one of them. And I've always listened. I've then researched. And there have been times when Roseanne has been right. And I've tried to make a change in reference to it. I've been on the same side as you are now. You know, not as, anything as large as this. But there was a time where they were gonna close down the par four at the restaurant and go out for bids for somebody new, which would have had a great impact on many families in the area. And we organized and came and talked to the council in a very respectful manner, I felt, and we were able to make a change. So, I'm not adverse to that. What I would just say to you is this, what has been said. We can't jump. We might want to jump, but we can't jump. There's a process. We have to work with the process. And believe me, it's frustrating. I know you're probably way more frustrated than we are. But it is frustrating for everybody. And what is right will come out of this. So, if we can try not to have quite so much animosity, try to work together, we truly are here because we care about Groton and what happens in Groton. So, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here.
And with that, we will take a five-minute recess. So, 8:13, everybody. Thank you.
Move the consent calendar when it's your turn next?
Uh.
So you're just gonna say, "I moved the consent calendar."
Yeah, if I could, we're.
It's just right here.
Yep.
That's all you have to say.
Resolved at the minutes of the town council?
No, all you have to say is, "I moved the consent calendar."
Oh, okay.
Because we do, we do everything under seven as one.
Okay.
All right, thank you. We are back. It is 8:15, two minutes late. I would ask everybody if we could just have your seat, and we're gonna start the meeting again, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, recess is done at 8:15, and we are on to Roman numeral seven, Consent Calendar. Councilor Obrey.
I would just move the consent calendar.
Moved by Obrey. Is there a second on the consent calendar?
Second Bordelon.
Seconded by Bordelon. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none? All those in favor of the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councillors, communications, and reports. We will start with town councillors. Boddy.
Yes, I attended a long-term recovery meeting last week, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a report on, I'll be talking about that, too. Counselor Parker.
Just that we received communications via email, and myself, counselor.
Excuse me. The meeting has restarted, please. Go ahead, Counselor Parker, please continue.
And myself, Councilor Baumgartner, Mayor Granatowski, and Counselor Melendez participated in the Fourth of July Parade, and I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec staff for all their hard work in organizing it, who was well-attended, and I want to again thank them for it, and glad that we did Everyday Harrows. Thank you.
Yes. Counselor Franco.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Counselor Obrey.
Yes, I attended the Affordable Housing Committee in listening only, had a little technical problem, and I also attended the Long-Term Recovery Meeting, and I think that's about it.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelon.
Thank you. I attended the Long-Term Recovery Meeting. I think it was a great meeting for anyone who was not able to attend, to watch. There's a lot of discussion there, and I'm sure the mayor will report on that, and there's more information hopefully to come, and more meetings to be had to discuss different ways that we want to collaborate to move forward. I also attended, New London did a second flag raising of their pride flag. They took down the, what was considered more of a traditional pride flag, and added one that had black and brown on it as well for, to recognize black lives in the LVG, TQ, queer group population to make sure that people understand that folks in this area are discriminated against for not only their choices as far as their gender identities, but also being of color, and I thought that was an amazingly attended event. We, they hung it at the town hall, they had people from CT, out CT, which was wonderful. They spoke, they had flowers, and they named and rang a bell for, I think it was about 58 or 59 minorities who had been killed as a result of coming out and being a part of this population. So I really thought it was just moving to hear and really just thinking about it from another level, which they did so nicely, and recognizing towards the end of the month, including the black lives and that flag as well. Thank you.
Counselor Melendez.
Thank you. Glad to be back to in-person meetings. It's, you know, another step to getting back to completely normal, and I think it's, you know, it's just a good sign that, you know, everything is getting better. I did have the great privilege of walking in the July Fourth Parade with the Lieutenant Governor and Mayor Granatowski, and I just want to thank her for coming to Groton. You know, there's tons of parades all around Connecticut, and she found the time to come to our town, so I want to thank her for that.
Thank you. Counselor Zepary.
At the last meeting I attended, we had discussed the council, the Groton Town Council, taking a position regarding vaccinations for COVID, and we formed a subcommittee. I met with the subcommittee on May 30th, Conrad Heed, Leanne Obrey, and Warren Melendez. Also, weren't you there?
No.
Oh, I'm getting confused. I thought you were there. But at any rate.
Conrad. Conrad, who's here.
Conrad, yeah. At any rate, we left it that the meeting, the group would continue on. I was anticipating surgery in the next couple of days, so the group did meet again, and Conrad told me last night that the resolution was that we were going to invite Ledge Light to provide a mobile vaccination center for Groton Day and at other public days when we have, we can get them in and try to encourage people to get vaccinated. I think very seriously, and I've said it before, that the only weapon we have to fight this war is the vaccination. Those who are vaccinated are immune from the disease for the most part. Those who are not vaccinated create a pool, a reservoir in which the virus can continue to replicate and to mutate, and ultimately may come to a strain that is not affected but controlled by the vaccine. So it's important to get it under complete control soon. And we have great news from Ledge Light in that the incidence of the disease in the last two weeks has been fairly low in our entire area. There were fewer than five cases in Groton over a two-week period, and a total of 12 cases in the whole district. I think that's encouraging, but unless we get a grip and we continue with our efforts to vaccinate, we are at risk for falling back. And we see the states that have the low vaccination rates are having a resurgence of the virus now. I believe it was, I don't know, was it Missouri that had to send out for additional respirators, ventilators, because they're having a lot, a lot more cases. So Connecticut's done well with its vaccination program, but I think we should be stepping up in front and encouraging people to get vaccinated.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctors Zepary. I think I know why you thought Counselor Melendez was part of it, because as part of the work that they did, they have arranged for
Right.
the mobile clinic to be at a DEI event, which Counselor Melendez is our representative, and Counselor Parker, I believe, is also on the DEI committee. So yes, thank you, continued that work. I know they're working on some other things, and they'll be reporting back to us when they have further information, so they have some good ideas that we'll be hearing about. As far as long-term recovery, we met on the 30th. We're gonna be meeting again on the 14th. Is it the 14th, I think? Because today's six, seven?
Yes.
14th. And the reason why we're having another meeting so soon is because now there are finally things happening, and we need to talk about some issues. It was nice, we welcomed Assistant Superintendent Piazza. Dr. Piazza joined us for the first time to talk about how the schools will be spending their money. Mayor Hedrick was with us discussing some things there, as well as his planning person, Ms. Patrick. Let's see. There were lots of ideas floated about how the money could be spent, and one of the things was, Mr. Bronk and Mr. Burt both talked about how do we decide how to spend the money? Where's the need? How can we find out what the need is? And they're looking at different ways to do that, and the idea of spending versus investing in the community. And there were several good ideas floated by members of this council that were there. Let's see. As far as infrastructure improvements are possible, let's see. We had Representative Conley joined us discussing the state's role in this. And Director Fondulus for Human Services said she's awaiting her marching orders from us, so they're ready to go. Whatever we decide to do, however we decide to, you know, invest in our community, social services is ready to go. So seven 14th, July 14th, 5:30 is our next meeting, and it will be here at the Senior Center in person. So you're more than welcome to attend if you would like. Also, I wanted to thank the Lieutenant Governor, Susan Beisowitz, for coming down to Groton. She had a busy day, but she did make it down here just for our parade. She loves Groton, so it was very nice to have her here with us. Thank you. Clerk of the representative town meeting.
Let's see. The RTM will not be meeting in July. Their next meeting is scheduled for August 11th at 7:30 in this room here in the Senior Center. That's it for RTM.
Clerk of the council.
Couple of things for council. Let's see. There is a new system through, or a search engine, that the town clerk's office will be using shortly for land records searching called Record Hub, and also, we're in the works of getting electronic recording available. And there will be an additional vendor being offered for vital records purchases called Permedium. We're still in the planning stages of that, so I don't have all of the logistics with me, but more options in regard to purchase of records, so using QR codes to send a queue to a system where the staff would then sign in, print the record, and either mail it to the requestor, or we can hold it for pickup and still pay at the counter. So those are a couple of things we've got coming down the pike. There were a couple of house bills that were passed recently that will affect some of the processes in the town clerk's office, including an act concerning access to original birth certificates by adult adopted persons, and that includes anyone 18 or older. They have the right to request in writing their, an uncertified copy of their original birth certificate, so from the closed file, at a fee of $65, which the typical, or standard birth certificate certified copy is 20. So just the staff will have access to the record to issue to the requestor. The record that we issue is, again, uncertified, and it will be stamped with superseded so that it can't be confused with the adoptive record. There are also some other various revisions coming in regard to public health statutes, one of which is a revision to marriage licenses will become effective on October 1st of this year, which will eliminate the requirement for a person to list or a couple to list their race. Also, the couple will be listed as spouse one and spouse two, rather than bride and groom or spouse one and spouse two, as it lists both now. Let me see. I think that's the majority.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Town manager, Mr. Burt.
Counselor Zepary stole my thunder about the less than five cases, so. Bit of housekeeping now that we're back live. Wondering who wants to have packets mailed to them in advance versus looking digitally, and, or do you want digital, and we can bring a packet with us? Just, you know, let me know. I know if Counselor Zepary wants a packet sent to him.
I would, please. I like to make notes on it.
I'm applying for the state, continue the way it's bound.
So. I'll just write that down real quick. Okay. Other than that, Noink Gardens will be submitting a request to the Noink Zoning Commission to be able to do permission to plant trees. That takes action on their part, so. Once that's provided, or assuming we get that, we could start fundraising, like start fundraising now for trees, and not anticipating an issue. As a reminder, next week we'll be looking at that Noink Riverview Avenue parking issue where the stones are out there. Just a reminder, if you haven't seen the site, to drive by if you can beforehand for the discussion. Other than that, I'm just here for any questions.
Thank you.
I do have one other, I'm sorry to interject. I did have one other thing that I needed to mention. I don't know if I can do that now.
Please.
Okay. There was a letter that was dated from June 30th, submitted by Richard Fitzgerald. It was sent to council and RTM, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission, with a request for it to be read onto record, so I'm not sure if someone would like to do that, or.
You are welcome to.
Okay. Great. RTM and town council, congratulations on the planning, or the Groton Planning Development Department and town manager, Mystic Coastal Access, 70 to 80 percent completely inaccessible from the point into the future, and then it goes on to reference the resolution on April 6th of 2021, Mystic Coastal Access for Replacing Missing Signage. Do you want me to read each of the pieces? I mean, this will be part of this evening's record minutes, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I believe everyone received it.
Everyone should have received a copy in your packet.
Yes. Yes, and if you attach it as part of the minutes, that would be great.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Bordelon, did you have a question for Mr. Burt?
Sure. My first question was, where do we stand as far as community meals back at the Senior Center?
Director Mark Berry from the Parks and Rec, he's meeting him and Mary Jo Riley, who is the manager of the Senior Center. They're meeting with, I think the name's Courtney Assad, with GCM. Mrs. Assad had said, you know, there has been some concerns. She said she thinks she can alleviate those. I'm anticipating that they'll come together tomorrow and come to an agreement, so that was also my direction to Parks and Rec, so I'm anticipating we'll work that out tomorrow.
Thank you. I don't believe we have anything. Superintendent Austin did contact us to let us know that she would not be able to be here this evening, but she will be at the meeting tomorrow night, which is the Town Council, Board of Ed, RTM, city, I think that's all the bodies that are involved in that. We have our meeting, so she will be there. If anyone has questions, please just, you can attend the meeting or you can go through one of the members who attend, which is Counselor Parker and myself. Committee reports. I have nothing from committee of the whole personnel and appointments. Chairman Melendez?
No meeting, no report.
Rules. Chairman Obrey?
No meeting, no report.
Public safety. Chairman Baumgartner?
No meeting, no report.
All right, we are on to item 10, which is 2021-3874, Sandy Hollow Road Resurfacing. This was page 22 in your packet, and this is Counselor Bordelon.
I'd like to make a motion for resolution approving the resurfacing of Sandy Hollow Road, Ascenic Road. Whereas on July 6th, 2021, by resolution, the town of Groton held a public hearing on the proposed resurfacing of Sandy Hollow Road. Now there be resolved that the town council approves the Public Works Director's request to resurface Sandy Hollow Road, Ascenic Road authorize is hereby granted to schedule the work immediately. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Bordelon and seconded by Vice of Perry. And this is the item, we just had the public hearing, and Mr. Panover spoke briefly earlier. Are there any questions about this particular item? Counselor Bordelon?
I just wanted to say, you know, to clarify, because I have it in my notes as well, was that big dip, you know, lump going into the turn, so I know it doesn't say that that will be fixed on here, but does it need to be, or it's just understood that it will be fixed?
It'll be fixed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments. All those in favor of 2021-387, Sandy Hollow Road Resurfacing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councillors. We are on to 2021-4371, Children First Groton Collaborative Grant, 2021, page 23. Counsel, oh, this is so appropriate. It was your motion. Counselor Melendez.
I make a motion recommending a resolution authorizing the superintendent of schools to execute the contract between the Connecticut Council for Philanthropy and Groton Public Schools to receive grant funding in the amount of $35,000, whereas Children First Groton and School Readiness Council were recently awarded grant funding in the amount of $35,000 from the Connecticut Early Childhood Funder Collaborative, and whereas the grant will assist in focusing on the expansion of the Children First Groton and School Readiness Council Collaborative Leadership Group to be more diverse and broaden the representation reflective of the community, and whereas by successfully partnering with underrepresented groups such as parents, military families, and faith-based members, along with increasing the number of residents participating, Children First Groton and School Readiness Council will strengthen the effectiveness, depth, and scope of the work, resulting in a collaborative that represents a diverse population of Groton. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes the superintendent of schools, Susan Austin, to execute the contract agreement between the Connecticut Council for Philanthropy as a fiscal sponsor for the Connecticut Early Childhood Funder Collaborative and the Groton Public Schools as the fiscal sponsor for the Children First Groton School Readiness Council Collaborative, and to receive the grant funding in the amount of $35,000 referred to the RTM. I so move.
Second. Parker? Moved by Melendez and seconded by Parker. Any questions or comments on this particular item? And we thank everybody involved with Children First Groton for pursuing this grant. All right, all those in favor of 2021-437, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to 2021-1415, Land Acquisition, Approval of Purchase and Sales Agreement for Wolf Brook Property. This was page 24, but Mr. Burt, you said there was a new version of the relevant.
These packs should all have the current version.
Oh, except for mine. I see.
Except for you. She picked hers up early.
All right. Counselor Zepary, are you prepared to read the resolution for 2021-141?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution to authorize the town manager to sign the purchase and sales agreement for Wolf Brook Property, whereas the town of Groton has been working with the property owner of Zero No Ink Ledge Road regarding the town's interest in purchasing approximately 161-acre parcel for open space and recreation purposes. And whereas the Wolf Brook property has an appraised value of $880,000, and the town has successfully negotiated with the property owners to purchase the property for $800,000. And whereas the Wolf Brook property requires permanent protection due to its ecological, environmental, and historic value, and whereas the town staff applied for Connecticut DEEP Open Space and Watershed Grant and received a grant in the amount of $352,000, 40 percent of the appraised value of the property, for open space acquisition. And whereas the town of Groton will contribute $220,000 toward the purchase price of the property, and Groton Open Space Association will contribute up to $210,000 toward the purchase price of the property, and $18,000 will be contributed via additional grants, fundraising, or donations. Now therefore be it resolved that the council, the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to sign the purchase and sales agreement, and to have the town manager sign all necessary documents to close on the property. I so move.
Second. Bordelon.
Moved by Zepary and seconded by Bordelon. Yes, Counselor Parker.
Does it not have to be, does it not have to be referred to the RTM?
It will be. You don't have to put it in the resolution, but it automatically goes there because it's required as part of the process in the charter. This has come up before. The attorney said it's not required.
It's going to them.
It's going to them. Yeah, it has to.
I know. It just, my concern is, we did it for the last one, refer to the RTM. Maybe just be consistent.
Sure.
I'm just, I would feel better. Thank you.
All right. I see, just, did you wish to speak, Mr. Reiner? No? Okay, very good. Any comments? I just would like to thank everybody who participated in making this happen, town staff for their work preparing for the grant, our partners with Groton Open Space Association and the other conservation groups that will be helping to fund this purchase, and I do believe it is a very valuable parcel of land, and I'm pleased that we were able to make it happen, so. All right.
If I may?
Yes, Counselor Obrey.
I'd just like to thank John Reiner and his staff that worked so hard on this. At the very beginning, I wasn't enthused with it at all, and he educated me to the importance of it, and I praise he and his group for their persistence. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you. Mr. Burt?
Should the recommendation from Counselor Parker be an amendment just to make it official?
Would you like to do that, Counselor Parker?
Yes. Okay. I'd like to make an amendment to the resolution to add, refer to the RTM.
Second. Ms. Alexander, is that sufficient?
Yes.
Better give her a PCO paper to write that down.
I think that's simple enough that we've got that.
I can send that to her right now.
Counselor Parker. Counselor Parker, would you like to put that in writing, please, for the clerk?
That'd be great. Thank you.
That was moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. Thank you.
See? But I didn't forget you.
I had two words and a price.
Did you wish to speak?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. We follow the formality in equal to everyone. I had three words and a price tag, number change, and I was, made sure that I wrote that down, so just let's follow it each and every time the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker is doing that, yes.
Yeah, after being asked.
Let me know when you're ready. Ms. Alexander, are you set with that?
I'm, I'm just gonna give it to her as is. I wrote it in what, oof.
Oh, you wrote the whole thing?
Yes, I did.
Ah, excellent. Thank you. Instead of just three words. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we will vote on 2021-141, Land Acquisition. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. And now, we are on to 2021-3971, which is Zero Paquonic Road. This is on page 25. Mr. Burt, did you want to introduce this before we do executive session?
I'll bring Mr. Reiner up.
Okay, thank you. I knew you were here for some reason. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Good to be back in person. Still a little odd. So just wanted to talk to you tonight in executive session about the property. It's called either Zero Paquonic Road or 1208 Paquonic Road. It's the site of the old Nutmeg Farms parcel. Our property, it was a piece of property that the town became an owner of it through a tax foreclosure. Included in your packet was both a Phase 1 and Phase 3 environmental assessment that was done by tie-in bond for the town back in about 2016, as well as some information from an older report dealing with some of the contamination on the site, the cleanup that had happened, as well as future possible remediation or other options. We have been contacted by someone that wishes to lease that property from the town, and would like to talk about that a little bit.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, I don't have a resolution or a motion for executive session.
I just have a quick question. What are we going into discuss again?
Did you need Mr. Reiner to repeat?
What part are we discussing in executive session, did you say?
If the town wants to go into negotiations with someone that is looking to lease a piece of property from the town.
A lease, okay, thank you.
Counselor Parker, would you like to read the resolution for executive session?
I hereby move that the members of the town council, town manager John Burt, and planning director John Reiner go into executive session pursuant to general statute, section 1-200, section 6D, for the discussion of the selection of a site or the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate by the state or a political subdivision of the state concerning the negotiations for the potential sale of Zero Paquonic Road. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco to go into executive session for the stated purpose. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. It is 8:44, and we are going to be going into executive session. Let's just give town staff, who is not part of executive session, a chance to leave the room. That'll just go to, thank you.
Hello, it is 9:20 and we are out of executive session. And we are on to Roman numeral 11, which is other business. And this is the open agenda item review. This was on page 116 and 117 in your packet. Mr. Burt did a grand job along with Ms. Hilton in putting in everything on here that's upcoming. And you can see we have quite a bit of things that are -- we're going to be able to be moving on in the month of July and our two cows. So that's where we are. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. Can I get an estimated time of when the fund balance minimum review will be coming forward?
How about August? Will August work?
Sure.
August?
I don't think we have anything planned.
I don't think -- well, we did go out that far. We went to August, but I'm not going to dig it out of my bag right now.
That's okay.
So we do have the whole month of July planned and we have some things for August, but we should be able to fit in a cow. We're just going to have to go into a cow in August, either the first or the second cow.
All right.
So that'll give everybody time to kind of digest.
Okay. And I also noted that the safety committee referral has not been brought back to the council and it's not on here.
That's correct. We are waiting because there were concerns with -- this is one of the reasons why I like everything in writing. There were concerns with the language in the referral and we are having the attorney look at the language to see how we can proceed because we don't want to appear to be targeting a particular entity.
So this is for -- no, I'm talking about...
You're talking about a public safety referral that you made?
The -- no, I'm talking about the oversight referral. Citizens Oversight Review Board?
It's on the bottom of the page. There's no date set.
Oh, Cork?
The Cork?
That's from -- the Cork is from the RTM, but the safety committee has voted...
The Cork Report Discussion?
And sent it back to the council and it hasn't come back to us yet.
Is it on here? And I don't -- do we have -- do we have the...
That's what I'm saying, the Cork Report.
Okay.
All right. Because the Cork Report was from the RTM that went to the council and the safety committee. And then there was a separate referral sent to the safety committee from the council. And I don't see it on here, so...
So, Mr. Burt, you're having that listed with the Cork Report Discussion, that referral. I have to go back in. It's been a while since we've discussed this and I don't remember how many people... Do you remember?
I'm sorry?
Did we get the number, the supporters for that one?
For the safety -- yes.
Public safety?
Yes.
Okay. So then that will have to be set as well.
And what about the neighborhood parks, playgrounds referral? I think that's got the support.
That just got the support recently, yes.
Yeah, but that's -- I don't know that that's going to be in July.
No, I meant it's not on this list.
It's not on the list. I was assuming that it would be on an upcoming list, so I wasn't...
So that's the Ramblewood Park.
Ramblewood as well as -- what was it? What did you call it?
The West Side.
The west side of town, not the West Side School.
No, sorry.
Not to confuse with the West Side School.
Yep.
That's going to be on.
I will add those up later stages.
All right, very good. Counselor Baumgart?
Yes, the complete streets policy. I'm reading here.
Up there at the top, yep.
The Planning and Zoning Commission issued their memo on the topic.
Yes, I received it a week -- oh, like two weeks ago.
Excellent.
We received the memo from the planning and zoning commission recently. And matter of fact, I can distribute that prior to coming up here. I'll put them on the list.
That would be good. If you could send that out and then we could all have a chance to look at it and then figure out where we could fit it in. So Mr. Burt will send the... Okay, very good. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
移位 by Parker, second by Frank. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? So moved unanimously. We adjourned at 9:25 p.m. Thanks everybody for coming back and in person. Hope please everybody stays healthy and we can keep doing this in person.
I think it's great. Be back together.